All right, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. Mayor and council meeting on Monday, December 5th. We have with us Pastor Shell Osman with Life Church Assembly of God at 4100 Kingsprings Road for the invocation and pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Thank you, Lord, for the privilege of being able to gather together, Lord. We ask that you would guide our city leaders as they make decisions for the betterment of our community. Thank you, Lord, for these men and women who serve so selflessly and so sacrificially. We pray that you would give them wisdom as they debate and as they confer with one another, Lord, and as they make these decisions. Let it be all for the betterment of this great community that we call Smyrna, for we ask it all, Lord, and tonight, while some may offer their prayer in another name, it's my joy to offer this prayer in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen and amen. We're joined together in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Glad to see you're feeling better. Item two is agenda changes. We don't have any tonight. Item three is the mayoral report. We have a couple of items here. Number one is the Smyrna Education Foundation Report and Check Presentation from JRM Management. So I'll invite them up now.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Santos, representing Smyrna Education Foundation. Barb sends her regrets she can't be here this evening. And we have Bill.
I'm Bill Watson with JRM Management and just want to say thanks for having us here tonight. It's been a couple of years with COVID when you're in the business of getting a lot of people together. We were kind of out of business for a while and it's good to be back in business. Events are robust in the Spring Jonkwell, Taste of Smyrna, and the new Crafts and Drafts events went over really well with the new, with the construction and the layout. We worked with the city. They were great to work with as far as having the events and the people have really responded. So as with JRM, with our company, our matriarch, Fay Miller, was a 30-year teacher in Cobb County, and so education's always kind of forefront and top of our minds. So we've been supporting the Education Foundation over the years and now that we've got the events and we're back in business, we'd like to continue to do that. And so we have a check for $10,000 we want to present to the Smyrna Education Foundation, and now that we're back in business, we can keep doing that. Another thing that we've done, we've been partnering with Kevin in Atkins Park, and I'll let Kevin speak in a sec here, as far as doing beverage sales at the events. And it's great because we can partner together and I think it's working pretty good. We can kind of see that growing and doing better. And we've got, we do a percentage of that. We both agree that we need to give back. And so we have $2,001,3390 as the total for the year on those sales that we want also to give to you. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say I really appreciate allowing us to be a part of that and continue the great success on that. And thank you to the city for allowing us to do that too and participate. Thanks.
Thank you. And then I just have a few more notes to fill you in, kind of update you on what's been going on. We really appreciate the support from the city, all of our sponsors. JRM is a big partner and we really appreciate that partnership and opportunity to participate in the Taste of Smyrna. We would also like to support, thank you, the Sharon Darby Foundation, Georgia Power Foundation, South State Bank, and Big Bear Sports. So these are contributors towards our grants that we provide for the schools. We have a folder given to all of you that has information about the foundation. We have several different schools that we support, about 12 schools. One of the new things we did this year was we had a grant, I mean, excuse me, an essay competition in the middle schools and the high school. So we had students submit, we had 60 submittals to write an essay on how being financially responsible today will affect your future endeavors. And we got some phenomenal responses, and so we had three winners and they all got awards. We also have added a grant cycle in the fall to support the schools specifically focused on health and wellness. So in addition to just supporting the overall school and the principals sort of in the spring, we've asked for inputs from PE teachers, nurses, and the counselors. So we got some, a lot of good grant responses from them, so we're supporting that as well. So we're growing our outreach to the community to add additional funds to the Education Foundation, and we appreciate the support. So thank you for letting us be here, and we're open to answering any questions if anybody has any.
We just appreciate your service and all those on the board. I served on that board years ago and appreciate all you do. Thank you to JRM, to Atkins Park for their partnership and look forward to great things ahead. Thanks, y'all.
Thanks so much.
Item two or B on the mayoral report is recognition of Campbell High School JROTC Lady Spartan Raiders and Male Spartan Raiders. The ladies won the state championship for the second straight year, and the men finished in third place. And y'all are to be commended and we're very proud of you for doing so. And I think Mr. Tim Gould has a press release that he was going to reference and talk about, and then we'll invite you all up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. So yeah, this is the fun part of being on the council, get to recognize some great achievements around the city. Campbell High Lady Spartan Raiders clinched back-to-back state championships. Male team wins third at state, I think for the second year in a row also. On October 29th, 2022, Campbell High School JROTC Lady Spartan Raiders captured the Tier III Georgia Raider State Championship for the second consecutive year. The competition was held at Spalding High School in Griffin, Georgia. The male Raider team secured third place at this year's competition. The Spartan Raider team are to be commended for their tremendous resilience, grit, and determination on and off the field. Campbell competed in Tier III, the largest category of JROTC programs, and won against elite high school teams and military academies across the state of Georgia. This Raider competition consists of five rigorous timed events that included, includes a team run, cross-country rescue, Raider fitness challenge, rope bridge, and a tire flip. Team captain Maritas Medina said, quote, "We really wanted a chance to defend our championship title. After seeing what we were capable of doing as a team, we came back hungry for more and motivated to do our best. We know it was going to be a challenge because seven seniors graduated from our team, but we had a lot of new talent joining us this season. The key to our success this year was hard work, self-discipline, commitment, and teamwork. Together, we worked hard all year, and now we can proudly say that we are back-to-back state championships, state champions." Male team captain Foster Johnson said, quote, "I'm very proud of all the hard work and determination that our team showed this year. We showed great improvement and resiliency as we made our second straight appearance at the state competition. Winning third place at state against elite teams in the hardest category is a huge accomplishment. There's no better group of guys that I could have asked to compete with." Lady Spartan Raiders Team One has won the state championship for two consecutive years under the leadership of Coach Sergeant Major Shadina McCabe. Sergeant Major McCabe stated, "These young cadets make us proud of their perseverance, strength of character, and drive to succeed." Coach McCabe and the Spartan Raiders team would like to thank all the parents, the JROTC leadership, and school administration for the infinite support this season. So congratulations, you guys. It's awesome. We're proud of you. You're wonderful young leaders of our community. You do so much stuff out there in the community that I think a lot of folks don't know. You show up at a lot of different events. We really, really appreciate what you do for Campbell High School and of course for the city of Smyrna. Thank you.
I'd like to invite the coaches and students up. Come on up. Come on up front. We'll get a picture. And coaches, if you want to say anything, you can do so. Don't be shy.
Congratulations. That's awesome. You guys do, you guys do a lot of great work.
The cleanup day at Campbell High School, it's usually organized by the JROTC cadets, and they're out there in the morning. They're all organized. They're doing it. They show up at most of our Memorial Day, Veterans Day ceremonies.
As they all file out, that's good. I have a couple of other things to report on in the mayoral report. First of all, Good Kitchen is open. If you haven't been, it's where Porchlight was, and it's really good. They're going to be great community partners. I encourage you to go and experience the Good Kitchen. It's awesome. I want to recognize our finance department. They were recognized for excellence in financial reporting again this year. We've got a great team and appreciate their efforts. I want to recognize the Smyrna Youth Council. They've been actively gathering clothing for those in need in our community, and they had a booth at the Coming Home for the Holidays celebration last week and are doing really good work in the community. Appreciate those students for serving on that youth council. And I don't know if you went to the Coming Home for the Holidays celebration last week, but it once again, I don't know, they say we had 5,000 people in our downtown. We welcome Santa here and lots of vendors, and it was, it was pretty special. Looked like a scene out of a movie again. And I want to thank our staff for putting that on and our public safety folks for, for keeping everybody safe. These events are huge and they keep going off without a hitch. So really appreciate all of their efforts. Had college football Saturday, this last Saturday, and that was another great turnout. We look forward to more of those next year. And also, as we open the new parks, we can do some of the Braves games and things like that. So we'll be adding to our programming as we go. And then lastly, since we last met here, we had the first Faith Leaders Roundtable meeting that I know of in the city's history. I invited all of the Smyrna religious leaders to have lunch, and I'm proud to say that over 20 of them attended and participated to share ideas and have conversation, and it was a pretty powerful conversation. I see one of our pastors is here, and I know you were there. Thank you for being here and for participating. I think that this group, I look, I think it'd be really good to share ideas and a lot of good things will come from them. And I just look forward to great things ahead. It's going to be a great way to help more people in our community. So with that, conclude the mayoral report. We'll move to land issues, zonings, and annexations. Item A 2022-481. This is a public hearing. Appeal the denial by the License and Variance Board for variance requests, V22-055. Allow encroachment into the 75-foot impervious surface area setback. Lot 696 at 1921 Sadler Drive, Eddy Carr by Wayne S. Melnick, who resides at 1921 Sadler Drive Southeast, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, has filed with the City Clerk's Office on September 1st, 2022 at 4:12 PM via electronic mail. Mr. Bennett, any background, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow encroachment into the city's 75-foot impervious surface area setback to allow for the construction of a new swimming pool at 1921 Sadler Drive. The city's stream buffers are controlled by Chapter 46, Article 6. The property was originally platted in 2006 after the stream buffer ordinance was enacted in 2005, and no mitigation plan has been proposed for the property. The hardship is self-created as the lot of record has existed after the stream buffer protection ordinance was adopted. Without a mitigation plan to offset any potential effects of the buffer encroachment, staff cannot assume that there would be no negative impacts to adjacent properties if approved. Community Development recommended the denial of the 75-foot impervious surface area setback encroachment. The variance requests were denied by a vote of 3-0 at the August 24th, 2022, meeting of the License and Variance Board. The homeowner, Wayne S. Melnick of 1921 Sadler Drive, has appealed that decision. Staff request mayor and council hold a public hearing per Section 1400 of the Smyrna Code to review the appeal as described.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And this, this item has come before council, once before. We spent considerable time on it. So it's in Ward 6, Councilmember Gould's district. Rusty, you want to tell us where we're at as far as any progress from the last time we met?
Yes, sir. I'm Rusty Martin, Community Development Director of the Community Development Department. My department handled the processing of the variance case. Eric Randall, Public Works Director slash City Engineer is here. If you guys got any stormwater or stream buffer questions related to this. But yes, we met, I think it was October 5th, and we had the appeal hearing, and at that hearing, there was some discussion about possible mitigation plans. The request was then tabled to allow staff and applicant the opportunity to try to work through those plans. Since that hearing, staff has met with applicants' representatives twice, one with the pool contractor, and the second time with the pool contractor and their engineer to go over their proposed mitigation plan. Unfortunately, at the second meeting, the mitigation measures aren't, aren't going to work for this site. So we weren't able to come to an agreement on a, on a mitigation plan that's going to be able to satisfy, you know, the water quality requirements for this site. And Eric can go into those specifics if you need him to. But at that point, we left that meeting and they requested to move forward and allow you guys to look at this request and hear this request and make a decision on the variance request without mitigation in place. I do have the presentation we presented before. If you want to go through that, I can refresh everybody. If not, we can move forward to...
We've talked about this at our council work session, and I'd invite anybody to ask any questions that they have or comments they want to make to Rusty or staff before we invite the applicant up.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd say just a, you know, a question is, I think you mentioned it, Rusty. So was the buffer in place when that neighborhood was developed or when it got annexed into the, into the city?
Yeah. I think this was rezoned in 2005 in Cobb County, and then it was later annexed into the city in 2006 and then subsequently developed under the city of Smyrna. So yes, this was in place. The subdivision came after the sub, the stream buffer ordinance was in place.
In my, my experience, I think your, your group in engineering, when they're involved, works hard to try to find, find a solution. And it sounds like that, that took place here, right? Where a lot of, there was a lot of back and forth in trying to find an area where you can mitigate the encroachment.
Unfortunately, the lot is a narrow lot, and it's a long lot that goes, and the stream is all the way at the back of this property. And the undisturbed portion of the stream buffer takes up, you know, close to almost half of the property. And then the 75-foot impervious surface area setback that we're dealing with with this case takes up a majority of the rear yard. So the house is just outside of that setback, and then building the pool, it gets in, it encroaches into that impervious surface area setback. And the issue we're running into is if you put any mitigation, if you bring mitigation techniques around the foundation of the pool or the house, you start, there's not enough room to space those appropriately away from those foundations. So you run into issues that, you know, they, they may create for themselves later on down the road.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for staff? I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I want to be clear. I largely don't disagree with a lot of what Rusty said right off the bat. I want to just return us to where we were at the previous conversation, which is we're talking, oh, I'm sorry. Please excuse me. I am the applicant. I'm Wayne Melnick, 1921 Sadler Drive. No worries. And I, and I recognize I'm still standing in my place from the last time that I talked to you. Where we left off was we were talking about 282 square feet at issue on this one. When we last talked, Mr. Mayor, you asked us to please, in easier language, get in a room and hammer it out, if at all possible. And we did that. We had a meeting about a week and a half after this last thing, and we presented multiple suggestions to the city planning department on possible mitigations that could be done. Every one of them was rejected by the city department because of the unique attributes of this particular land that we own, because of our house. You remember the conversation last time was about permeable pavers that we were getting into also. The permeable pavers that can be utilized in the backyard without getting into that, without encroaching too close to the foundation, which is what Rusty was just talking about, actually, if those are utilized, reduces the amount of unmitigated property to 230 square feet. So it's even less than we were talking about last time. But the truth of the matter is, once you get down to that 230 feet because of the unique attribute unique attributes of our house and the property, it just doesn't allow for other mitigation types. We asked the City Planning Office when we were in that meeting to hammer things out. We said, we're trying this, we're trying this, we're trying this. They said, no, 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 no. Finally, I said to them at that point, you tell me, what can we do? I'm trying everything that we know. Our engineers are trying everything we know. And finally, the suggestion was made by the City Planner's Office of replacing the driveway with permeable pavers. So we submitted another mitigation plan at that point that had that exact thing on it, that did exactly what the City Planner's asked us to do. Despite that, it was rejected, again, for the reasons that they've stated. And again, I'm not taking the issue with it. I'm just merely stating that's what's going on. We have literally done just about everything that you can think of to try to create a mitigation plan. But we're at that point where it's down to 230 feet. We can't do anything else with it at that point. I asked, when we asked during that mediation session, the Hammer It Out session, when we asked for a suggestion on them and how we could do, Kaitlin, who's obviously not here because she just had a baby, Kaitlin said to me, Wayne, the city staff cannot approve a mitigation plan if it doesn't account for all the property. That was important to me because it goes back to something that you said last time, Mr. Mayor, which was, you said you had great respect for the city staff, but also great respect for private property rights. If the Council upholds the appeal, it's not a disrespect to city staff, even remotely. It's they have no choice but to reject it because of that 230 square feet. What we are asking is because they have no choice but to reject it, that's what this appeal process is for. It allows for the city to take those things into consideration that the City Planning Office just doesn't have the ability to do. Mr. Gould, at the last hearing, you said to me, your biggest concern was with precedent on this. And so I respect that, being an attorney. Trust me. I get the importance of it. I went out and did a little digging on this and discovered there is one other property that actually does encroach the 75-foot buffer. It's at 1907 Sadler Drive. That is a house. It is not a pool or anything along those lines. But there is an encroachment to the 75-foot buffer. So we got in touch with the City Planning Office, Joey Staub's the person we spoke with, and asked him, has there been a complaint about flooding, any kind of waterage, anything along those lines, excuse me, related to that property? And his response was, the city has no information on that whatsoever. There is no report of it whatsoever, but you might want to check with Public Works. So we did. We got the information this afternoon. As a matter of fact, in Public Works, Eric from Public Works Office now tells us, no, there has been no complaint of anything on those points. Like I said, I took that comment to heart and wanted to make sure that we weren't getting ourselves in a situation. With regard to precedent, though, we're talking about a very unique set of facts of a very unique property that because of the various dimensions of the property, that has put us in the circumstance we're in, 230 square feet. I think that's basically a 15 by 15 room when you do the math on it. For those reasons, even in putting the partial mitigation plan into action, which would take us down to 230, I'm asking the Council to please consider and grant the appeal and override the denial of the hardship waiver. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions of the applicant? No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
This is a public hearing. I'd invite anybody who wants to speak for or against this item to come forward and be sworn in by our city attorney. All right, saying none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one thing I think that's evident here is Mr. Melnick work is, appreciate your work to go through the process and working with city staff and getting back into the room, so to speak, to try to hammer something out. And of course, staff's expertise and diligence in this matter, you know, it probably takes a fair amount of time, but it's an important issue, right? It's important to your family, and I appreciate that. So, and we, I think, in my experience with variances, staff works really hard to try to find a solution. And in this case, just to be frank, I don't think, I just don't see there is one to be found. So, yeah, I just, I don't see the denial of the appeal as a creating an undue hardship. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to deny the appeal, item 4A 2022-481, as previously read.
We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Wheaton. Any discussion?
Yeah. Rusty, can I ask a question on this? And I'm just listening to the applicant on this. There seems like there was some suggestion for making the driveway impervious or partially impervious.
I'm going to turn this question over to Eric.
Okay. I guess, the question is, what happened?
Yeah.
Good evening. I was not part of that initial meeting. The then assistant engineer, Frank Caruba, was. But I imagine it was suggested as a, these are different things you could look at, but the grade of the driveway is too steep to foster infiltration per Georgia Stormwater Management Manual.
Yeah. I mean, these are, this encroachment issue is something that we're, we have seen historically fairly routinely. I came to the Council myself and asked for one, and it was approved. Wasn't quite the same situation, but I, you know, I certainly would have hoped that we would have been able to reach some, some solution to this problem. But nonetheless, that's all I have.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to deny. Those in favor of that motion will vote yes, and those opposed will vote no. That motion was approved 6-0. Item B, authorization to submit the comprehensive plan update to Department of Community Affairs for review and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this hearing is to brief the community on the contents of the draft plan, provide an opportunity for residents to make final suggestions, additions, or revisions, and notify the community of when the plan will be submitted to the Atlanta Regional Commission, also known as ARC, and Georgia Department of Community Affairs, also known as DCA, for review. This plan serves as a relatively modest update to the major comprehensive plan prepared in 2017 by the firms Jacobs and Market Street Services. Feeding into this plan update was a public outreach effort that included an informational project website featuring a robust online survey, a public open house, and steering committee meetings and engagement. Recommendation is authorization to submit the comprehensive plan update to Department of Community Affairs for review and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Rusty, I know that you and your staff have been actively working on this for months now with public input and steering committee and all kinds of things. You want to talk a little bit about where we are?
Yes, sir. I'm going to turn, Andrew Smith with Atlanta Regional Commission. He's our project manager with the Regional Commission that is working on the plan. I'm going to let him do just a short presentation and tell you the components that we worked on and that we updated. It's all part of the hearing process to be able to convey this to the Department of Community Affairs. But yes, sir, we have been working on this for a year at this point. So we're sort of at the finish line. We need to get to DCA for a review against state requirements for certain elements within the plan. And then once they say we've met all those requirements, we can come back and officially adopt the plan. But Andrew?
Andrew, thanks for being with us tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me, and I really appreciate the time. And I'll try to be as brief as I can here. Hopefully the arrow keys work. I think, again, I appreciate the time. Mayor Norton and Councilmembers, thank you for having me. I think we all know a lot about this slide. This is kind of where we start, when we start the comprehensive planning process. Again, I'm Andrew Smith and with the Atlanta Regional Commission, been there since about 2011. And we work a lot directly with local governments of a variety of types and sizes throughout the region on updating their local comprehensive plans to meet the state requirements. Everything you see on the slide here is really why we plan, to try to get ready for the future, to try to take care of the present, try to build on our strengths and minimize weaknesses. Some of the background here, you know, our primary role before about 2012, and I apologize for the fonts. I think the, I think we may be using fonts that don't translate to whatever version of this PowerPoint this might be. So apologies for that. But our role really, until about a decade ago, was really as a conduit in terms of the review of local comprehensive plans. Major updates were really just due every 10 years, and there was a very minor update due at the five-year mark. Planning rules were really kind of complex and a little bit one-size-fits-all. There was a big revision to the state planning rules at that time that came through the General Assembly or was triggered by action in the General Assembly. And our role since then has been to continue that conduit, that review role, but also to provide direct assistance to a city or a county if requested. Again, updates are now due every five years, so it's a more frequent deadline. But the updates themselves are a good bit simpler. There's a lot more focus on flexibility and customization and the ability to tailor a plan to the specific local government's dynamics. Again, elements that really require, by the state rules, require updating every five years are needs and opportunities, a broadband element, which is relatively new, that has to do with high-speed internet. That's a big priority that the state wants to kind of push, for sure, for economic development and other reasons. The Report of Accomplishments, which just updates the status on every single item in the previous work program. And then a new community work program, used to be called the Short Term Work Program. And that is everything that's being carried forward that maybe has been started but isn't done yet, and any brand-new items that come out of the plan update process itself. What the Regional Commission is tasked with doing or required to do is, if asked by a local government, which we were asked by Rusty and his team last fall, to assist and sort of act like an extension of staff, we are required to help compile a list of goals, update the needs and opportunities, update that broadband element, and update the community work program, you know, of course, in partnership with the city staff. Our scope covered a good bit more than that. You know, really, our goal was to try to pull in feedback into every part of the plan, wherever it made sense to do so, not just in those kind of four required areas. So we facilitated a process to get that accomplished, did a lot of review of the existing plan back in the wintertime with Rusty's assistance and other officials with the city. Steering Committee was assembled. We met in March, talked about needs and opportunities, then maybe things that have changed in the last five years that are influencing priorities for the city. In May, we had another steering committee meeting where we discussed kind of vision and goals and some elements of the existing plan and tried to, really, the goal is trying to understand what still seems to resonate with the committee members and what maybe needs to be tweaked. During that time in the spring, we also released an online survey through a service that we use at ARC with all of our comp plans called Public Input. And it is, you know, a great service. I think it gets a lot of different quantitative and qualitative input and has a lot of features for that. So we worked on distilling that, came back to the steering committee over the summer with that third meeting to kind of talk through some of those findings from at least the first several weeks of the survey being out there. We also held a public house over at Bronner Hall. This was in late June, if I remember correctly. Had a lot of boards, a lot of interactive activities for the general public to understand more about the existing plan and understand what, you know, again, kind of still resonates for them as a priority for the city and what might need some tweaking. Since then, we have been working with my whole team at ARC to get a lot of different plans across the finish line with some staffing challenges that I know that a lot of cities and counties have been facing. But we have done our best to distill all of that input from the survey, the meetings, and really update the document. We're there now with a draft that's been online on the community developments part of the city's website. And this is a hearing that the state rules require to essentially provide a brief overview of the plan and then allow for any public comments. After this point, we will work with Rusty and his team to submit the plan for state review with Georgia DCA. Again, there's the ability to keep kind of tweaking it and modifying it a little bit over the course of that time while it's under review. And then it comes back, like Rusty mentioned, to actually be adopted, where you all sort of really take ownership of it and really take it through the adoption process. Again, structure from the 2017 plan is really largely unchanged. So many issues from that. It's a wonderful plan. It's very thorough. I think it was money well spent. But priority redevelopment areas, leveraging kind of Smyrna's location within the metro, making sure that new development is balanced and context-sensitive, trying to work on issues like congestion, infrastructure, expanding bike and ped transit, and just general connectivity, whether that's roadway or trail or sidewalk connectivity throughout the city, is something that seems very important based on what we heard, and it's already identified in the previous plan. Really leveraging the positive impacts of the battery and growth at Truist Park to benefit the city, and then taking care of natural resources, streams, tree canopy, historic assets, and working again to expand parks, rec, and green space. I'll wrap it up here in just a couple slides. Most of the changes really were to the first, there's three chapters in the plan. The first chapter updated the summary of the community engagement and kind of what we did and what we heard. Updated a lot of data and discussion around population, land use, transportation, housing, labor and employment, broadband. Updated kind of a list of supporting plans and studies. There have been a few important ones since 2017 that were important to kind of pull in under this umbrella. Also updated the needs and opportunities. That's a big component that the Regional Commission is required to help on. So we revised a lot of existing items to kind of strengthen the language, try to sort of frame them as assets to build on or challenges to address. Added some more detail and emphasis on almost all of those and added some new points of emphasis. Those blue arrows are what you can see. Those are sort of strong enough to be almost standalone, new needs and opportunities that are listed there near the bottom of the slide. Chapter two, really, that remained largely unchanged and kind of reaffirmed. That's the goals and policies. The policy map was slightly tweaked just to change things like, you know, Sun Trust Park to Truist Park and things like that. Future land use map and narrative that was slightly modified by city staff, I think just like at a parcel level and some other minor fixes on that map. Chapter three is really where you try to get into implementation. So of course, we updated the Report of Accomplishments to move that in from the addendum into the main part of the plan to make it clear what's been accomplished since 2017. And then took everything that's carrying forward, plus some brand-new items that city staff team here helped with to populate the new community work program for the next five years. And a lot of those other parts of Chapter three were really essentially unchanged. From where we go from here, again, we're going to refine the draft plan based on any comments that are emailed to, I think the comments are going to Joey Staub's email address. That's been online. Any comments that we receive tonight, I'll be taking notes and we'll fit those in where appropriate. There's some other minor changes that I've listed here that we'll be adding. And I think a little more thought work on kind of threads or through lines from the needs and opportunities section into specifically the goals and policies section. I think there's more potential to link those a little bit better. Essentially, there's a cover letter required by the chief elected official. So Mayor Norton, you would be signing that at this point. It's a template letter that Georgia DCA has available that just says, you know, basically, we're done with our process. Here's our draft that we're submitting for review, and that's how we submit it for review. Then again, as I mentioned, it'll come back in- Then again, as I mentioned, it'll come back into the city's court to go through the local adoption process as you would with any other city policy. So I just want to again, thank everyone for your time. And Rusty, I don't know if you needed to follow up with anything else, but I've got my information there and then comments on the draft plan. Again, that's on the website, and that's Joey's information there. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation and all the work you put into it, and also for all the citizens who participated on the steering committee and gave your time to do that. Really appreciate that. Any questions or discussion, council? All right. May I have a motion to approve item B, please?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Thank you. I should have noted earlier, Councilman Lindley is traveling and unable to be with us this evening. Item C, Z22-011, this is a public hearing, zoning request, Z22-011. Allow a rezoning from R15 to neighborhood shopping for an 8,000-square-foot retail business, .91 acres, landlot 700, 3410, Atlanta Road, Grove, Smyrna. This item has been asked to be tabled to the January 17, 2023 mayor and council meeting at the request of staff. This is the neighbors' feed and seed, trying to relocate over to Atlanta Road across from Covenant Church. So I need a motion to table this to the January 17, 2023 meeting, please.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hines. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Thank you. There are just some issues that need to be addressed and some questions need to be answered. So we'll look forward to having that debate in January, first meeting in January. Item five is privileged licenses. We don't have any. Item six, formal business. Item A, 6A, Resolution 2023-02, approval of Resolution 2023-02 imposing a 911 charge on postpaid wireline, wireless, and voice-over Internet protocol telephone service at the answering point at the rate of $1.50 per month received by a municipality and authorized the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, any background? These first three items, A, B, and C, are just things that we have to redo, reauthorize every year.
That's correct.
Okay.
Part four of Article II of Chapter Five of Title 46 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated authorizes counties and cities that operate a 911 public safety answering point to impose a 911 charge on the postpaid wireline, wireless, and voice-over Internet protocol telephone bill. In pursuant to Code Section 46-5-134 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, such charges shall be imposed at the rate of $1.50 per month, and the revenues received by a county or municipality from such charges must be deposited in the emergency telephone system fund maintained by the county or municipality. Imposition of the monthly charge is contingent upon the enactment of an ordinance or resolution of the county or municipality, and the city of Smyrna operates a 911 public safety answering point, and the city council does now deem it in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Smyrna to impose such a charge.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, and I'm sure that background will suffice for the other two items as well. May I have a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gould. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Item B, Resolution 2023-03, approval of Resolution 2023-03 imposing a 911 charge on prepaid wireless service at the retail point of sale at the rate of $1.50 per retail transaction and revenues received by a municipality and authorized the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. May I have a motion to approve item B? So moved by Dr. Wheaton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0 also. Item C, Resolution 2023-04, approval of Resolution 2023-04 reaffirms the necessity for the $1.50 911 charge on telephone subscribers served by the enhanced 911 system for the fiscal year. May I have a motion to approve item C? So moved by Dr. Wheaton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Thank you. We just have to go through that every year to reauthorize those charges. Item D, 2022-585, approval of fiscal year 2023 staff merit increases, cost-of-living adjustment, and adjustment to pay bands, and an additional supplement for certified public safety positions effective the first payroll subsequent to January 1, 2023. This is, I'm excited about this agenda item. This is our opportunity to take care of the people that take care of us, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bennett for any background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the annual budgeting process, an estimate for annual merit increases effective January 1 was included. The merit amount was included in contingency line item in the General Government and Allocations Department pending council approval of a budget amendment to move funds into the various departmental budgeted salary and FICA line items. As part of the classification and compensation study conducted by the University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute of Government, which was adopted by council, was the maintenance of the pay bands annually. When these pay bands were adopted, council stressed that they did not want to end up in the same situation where the pay bands were falling behind the market rates. The study recommended annual adjustments to the pay bands based on one of two factors, either the Employment Cost Index, also known as the ECI, or Consumer Price Index, also known as the CPI. The Employment Cost Index at September 30, 2022 is 4.6%, and the CPI is at 8.2%. Staff is recommending adjustment to the bands based on the Employment Cost Index rate for 2023, which is again 4.6%. Since this is the first year of adjustment under the new pay plan, and because of the large growth in the inflation rate, staff feels the ECI would be a better rate to set the precedent of adjustment on. We recommend supplementing the ECI with annual merit increases at the rates utilized in the past. Merit raises at January 1, 2023 were included in the contingencies line items in each of the individual funds. Initial amounts budgeted totaled $367,383. These budgeted amounts were decreased by $43,784.92 in July 2022 due to incorrect pay grade placement for several positions that were identified after initial adoption. Remaining amount in contingencies for merit is $323,598.8. Furthermore, the city is experiencing difficulty hiring and retaining employees in the certified public safety positions with the constant changes occurring recently in other jurisdictions. In an effort to recruit new employees and retain our current employees, staff is recommending an additional $2,000 pay increase for these positions. The estimated total for a 4.6% cost-of-living adjustment, merit raises at 1.5%, performance rating of 2, 2.5% for a performance rating of 3, and 3.5% for a performance rating of 4 and 5. And the $2,000 additional increase for certified public safety positions totals $1.3 million as of January 1, 2023, and that is including FICA. There is an additional $226,521 in unallocated contingency in the general fund that will assist in providing these raises. This leaves a budgeted deficit of approximately $750,000, which will be funded by savings from vacant positions and expenditure savings this fiscal year. At the Budget Committee meeting held on November 21, 2023, the committee agreed to cover the remaining amount with a one-time use of ARPA funds for the remainder of fiscal year 2023. If revenues for fiscal year 2023 outpace the estimated amounts, the city will utilize those amounts in lieu of using ARPA funds. The committee does not want to utilize the ARPA funds to maintain these new pay bands in the fiscal year 2024 budget. They want to ensure they are funded by operational revenues so that they are sustainable. The committee agreed that during the FY 2024 budget process, areas of cost savings would be analyzed and utilized to ensure the future funding of these pay increases. Staff recommends the approval of the FY 2023 staff merit increases and cost-of-living adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, and thank you to you and Kristen and Penny and the rest of the staff for all of the hours and hours you've spent on trying to figure out what the best way to address the continuing moving goalpost. Every time we do a raise for public safety, somebody else does one. It's been a very tough labor market. We are, our staff is doing a great job, even though we're down several positions, and this plan is a good way to take care of the people that take care of us and was not come too easily. And I'll just be frank, we inherited a mess as far as staff goes and how they were taken care of in the past. So this is a way to right the ship, and I'm really pleased that this is being brought forward. And then I'd open it up to the council for any comments or questions.
Yeah, Derek, I have to disagree. You didn't inherit a mess. I mean, we did everything we could to give raises and give incentives to keep people on, including bonuses at two and five years old.
I don't mean there wasn't effort. I mean that there was a mess as far as having done the pay study before, but then not maintained, but not maintained it. It wasn't maintained. Yeah. Any other comments? Mr. Gould.
Mr. Mayor, I think to just pick up on Corky's point, like, there is a lot of work that has to be done, and I feel positive about that. We are gonna, we have intentions to stick to the plan, and that we'll move forward and do it. And it's a difficult process. It's make sacrifices to other parts of the budget, but it's important, because like you said earlier, these are the folks that take care of us.
That's right. Any other comments or questions? All right.
Actually, I might just chime in. Thank you. I think also, I'll speak for when Corky and I first got on council, there was a recession, and the city was very, you know, had to make a lot of cutbacks in terms of the staff and the part-time workers and the, like, the landscaping contractors. So, you know, I'm just looking at that period of time when we went through that, and I, you know, I think we have been doing things even through our last administration and this one as well. So anyway, I'm happy to support what we're doing tonight. Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. I don't think the vote's showing up on their computers right now. Ms. Heather? And that's approved 6-0. Thank you. Item E, approval of a contract with Dynamics Consulting Group Personal Services, PO Box 68, Lake Alfred, Florida 33850, to perform a community risk assessment in phases as outlined in the attached scope of work document for a fee not to exceed $47,500 and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Smyrna Fire Department is pursuing agency accreditation through the Center for Public Safety Excellence. In order to declare candidacy, the agency is responsible for generating a community risk assessment, standards of cover document, community-driven strategic plan, and the self-assessment manual. This project will facilitate Phase One of the accreditation process.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any comments or questions from the council? I know this is an effort for the fire department towards their accreditation, and there's only a handful of fire departments in the state who have achieved that, so I'm excited about this effort moving towards that. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hines.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Thank you to Chief Marcos for bringing this forward. Item F, 2022-607, approval to amend the fiscal year 2023 ARPA Fund project budget for the council chamber audiovisual update in the amount of $15,000 for the purchase of additional equipment needed to complete the project. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council previously included the council chambers audiovisual update in the budgeted projects to be funded by American Rescue Plan Act grant funds. Additional screens were needed and new laptops and associated equipment for the council members. To complete this project, an additional $15,000 is needed for completion.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any questions or comments? Entertaining motion? Moved by Mr. Gould, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Item G, 2022-606, approval of a budgeted amendment to adopt, to the adopted fiscal year 2023 budget to increase the project budget for the Village Green Park in the amount of $500,000 to be funded by use of the fund balance reserves in the general fund. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Bid RFP 22-032 in the amount of $1 million was previously awarded to Winter Construction for the completion of the Village Green Park. Due to grading issues at the site and an increasing cost of the finishes to match the downtown park across the street, an additional $500,000 is needed to complete this project. And to give a little background, when the initial award was made, staff and Pond had no idea of the grading that was necessary on that site. There is quite a substantial grade elevation change from Atlanta Road to the King Street entrance to the park area. This grade change has had a few different, I guess, effects on the original budgeted amount with increased walls, increased grading work, increased moving work of the dirt. We have been through many, many iterations of the park with both Pond and Company and Winter's Construction to find the most economical way to get the grade change to, down to King Street. We have a conceptual plan of doing this, but in order to use the materials that match the downtown green space, Winter's Construction has given us an estimate of additional $500,000 needed.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Mr. Welch.
And comments. Was that not a design bill contract?
I think it was a maximum price contract, yes, sir.
Somewhere along the way, something went awry, because it should have been at that point, when it went to Winter Construction for pricing, they should have had enough to provide us with a price to build the project. And I don't know who's responsible for not making that happen, but now here we are. We started out with a project that was, back up a little bit. We conceptually agreed to sell the land to the brewery for $600,000, and initially, we were going to put the $600,000 to the park. Then the price went to $1 million. Now the price is at $1 million and a half, and somewhere along the way, we lost track of what was supposed to happen out there. I don't know if it's the engineer's problem or Winter Construction's problem, but it shouldn't have happened this way. I'm not going to support this project for that reason and the reason that I believe that this park benefits the brewery more than it benefits the city of Smyrna. So I'll cast my vote to the negative.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I was down in the downtown area, it's a family in town, and just saw the construction out in front of the community center and the library, and just look very, very much look forward to seeing that park completed. It'll be a great addition for the city. And so the park we're talking about here is adjacent to it, and also, when that is, when that is completed, it will be a, call it a lifetime project, that'll be in the downtown area, and it'll be to the benefit of all Smyrna residents. The design, I think, is appropriate. It's not too much. It's substantial enough that when it's completed, our residents will look and say, it was designed well, a lot of thought had gone into it, and I think it'll be a wise investment for the city to make this change.
Any other comments?
Can we speak on this?
No, this is not a public hearing. May I have a motion, please? I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gould. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 4 to 2, with Councilmember Wilkinson and Councilmember Welch voting in the negative. Item VII is commercial building permits. I don't believe we have any. Item VIII is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, MIN 2022-85, approval of the November 17, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, MIN 2022-86, approval of the November 21, 2022 pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, MIN 2022-87, approval of the November 21, 2022 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item D, 2022-572, request to extend work hours for concrete pours at 1885 Mitchell Road, as requested by the Conlon Company, landlots 684 and 685, 11.42 acres. The Conlon Company from December 15, 2022 through February 15, 2023, Monday through Saturday, no work on Sundays, 10:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m., with a total of 30 pours. Item E, 2022-577, approval of the reappointment of Ward 1 resident Shawn Garcia to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2024. Item F, 2022-578, approval of the reappointment of Ward 6 resident Nell Robinson to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2024. Item G, 2022-579, approval of the reappointment of the mayor's appointee, Ms. Sherry Harrington, to the Smyrna Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a two-year term to expire December 31, 2024. Item H, 2022-580, approval of the reappointment of the mayor's appointee, Mr. Joel Powell, to serve as chairman of the Smyrna Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term to expire December 31, 2024. Item I, 2022-581, approval of the reappointment of Ward 3 resident Lim Ward to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a five-year term that expires 12/31/2027. And Item J, 2022-603, approval of the appointment of Ward 5 resident Tanya Brinkley to the Smyrna Housing Authority to fulfill term that expires 5/31/2023.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Thank you. Item IX is Ward and Committee Reports. Start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report this evening.
Ms. Hines.
No report, but I would just like to reiterate, it was a wonderful event with Santa coming to town, and it was just a wonderful job done by our public safety in keeping everybody safe and being able to have a great event.
Mr. Welch.
No report this evening.
Ms. Wilkinson.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Gould.
Just want to thank Cub Scout Pack Number One for having me come speak to the 4th and 5th graders on Sunday, and it was a pleasure having a chance to be quizzed about all the happenings around the city and all those things. So funny questions you get from 4th and 5th graders, so.
I haven't been in front of 4th and 5th graders, but the 2nd grade classes that I've been reading to and going to see, they have some really good ones.
Good ones.
Yeah. Dr. Wheaton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to report out, and shot a communication out about this, too. We're very excited to get word today that Norfolk and Southern has started the work on the Silent Railroad Crossing Project, which is really exciting, certainly something that's really important for a lot of neighbors in the community over by Nickerjack Road area. So I look forward to that, you know, hopefully over the next several months coming into shape, and hopefully quieting down some pretty soon for those residents out there. And with that, I yield.
Now, that's been a long time coming. You gotta work on that. Mr. Bennett?
No report this evening, sir.
Mr. Cochran. Ms. Heather, anything about elections?
I think so. Yes, sir. Just a reminder, tomorrow is Election Day. Please check the city website under Voting and Elections or Cobb County Elections website to find your specific voting location. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. Item 10 is show cause hearings. We don't have any. Item 11 is citizen input. We have two people signed up to speak this evening. Ms. Shawn Martin, Williams Park, doesn't appear to be here. Jenny Barti.
Mayor and council, I'm Jenny Barti, Ward 7. Do you want my address? 4094 Laurel Springs Way, and I think Shawn left a little bit early. But I just wanted to come in and say a couple of things. I'm just, I'm curious as to why the issue of the grading was only found now with the proposed brewery. It seems very sketchy. It seems very puzzling why there wasn't more study done initially devoted to that, because it's a potential that green space had an environmental purpose, or it serves one, and it should have been much more investigated than it was. And so it's very puzzling why this wasn't done before. And I just have to ask that, what's the next problem that's going to be found that's related to this brewery and this redevelopment that you all have passed? It's astounding to many of us that this was ever voted on, and now we're finding out this is, you know, the cost is just exponentially growing all the time, and it's something we don't need in our community. And why was this not disclosed before there was a vote counted in the Cow Meeting? The community had no input in this. And that brings me to my second comment, is about public citizen input. It is not right to have public citizen input at the end of voting. This is not the right way to do things. You all need to change. Maybe other councils, maybe local governments often do have their public citizens' input at the end of voting, but it's not right. You know it's not right. The public, you all serve the public. You need to, you know, conduct yourselves that way. You need to listen to the public, okay? We've asked that so many times, and many of you, you've been responsive. I'll give you that, oftentimes, usually. And there are some people who, on this council, seem to question things more than others. We have some people who just seem to just go with whatever the mayor wants. So I hope that people will be more accountable to the public and not to the politicians. Thank you very much for listening.
Somebody else has signed up to speak this evening. If there's no other business to be brought before this body, we are adjourned at 8:09. Thank you.